That was the first, uh, public hearing on this measure, Bree?
Right, the next one is scheduled for Monday, uh, 5:00 PM. Same time.
Uh, right, and Speaker Tulahe did say that she's trying to get a third, uh, public hearing. As, uh, last night's public hearing stretched, uh, over five and a half hours. I believe it ended shortly before 11:00, uh, PM. And we do have, uh, three Republican senators who were attend- in attendance at last night's hearing. Senator Joanne Brown, of course, uh, 112, uh, co-sponsor, Senator Teletidegui, and minority leader, Senator Chris Duennas. Are we getting everybody? Senator Duennas, how's your mic? Okay.
Uh, yeah, Senator Duennas, you may need to, uh, Senator Duennas, if you can, you may need to, uh, like, leave and just rejoin the call and then just hit, uh, join with audio, and then you'll be good.
Right. Okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, so call using internet audio. So, Senator Teletlo, Senator, uh, Joanne, I guess just, um... My, my first question is, did everyone who showed up to testify last night get to testify, Senator Teletlo?
No, not at all. Uh, but good morning to everyone. And, yeah, it was a very long night. Um, I think what we should have done was put a limit to those who were speaking. Like, you know, when, when someone's talking so passionately, especially you're talking about your son, you know, who, who was a victim of medical malpractice and then some of the produce photographic that, that brought to show the, the panel, the senators, and the listening public was very, um, very shocking. And then, of course, Selena, who came on and spoke, you know, she was sitting there the whole time. You could tell that she was in pain, um, that whole time, waiting to be, uh, heard. But I think, um, moving forward, because it's gonna be a time limit, you know, trying to get everybody in there at least, just do five minutes. Um, I think the speaker might want to shorten the, the questions that the, um, senators may have unless it's a professional. Um, and, uh, I think the third public hearing that she has planned is a very good idea. I think also would be a good idea to, even after all this is done, that we have a roundtable discussion too as well. Um, but it was, it was a, a good public hearing. It was something anticipated. We anticipated that it was the medical, uh, health providers were gonna come in full force, and, and they did. Um, and the GOS, tens, uh, I mean, twenty other, uh, testimonies that were sent in via email was amazing. Uh, Dr. Lisa Nativedat, her testimony was amazing. I hope she can come on and, and read it into the record because it's a, a very, very good, as a medical professional too, as a social worker. Um, she even has medical malpractice insurance herself. Had the opportunity afterwards, uh, to speak with one of the doctors, one of the last doctors who spoke during the public hearing. And, uh, we talked in length, and she was the one that said, "Oh, I definitely have medical malpractice insurance." You know, "I don't know why any doctor, uh, would not have it." And she was quite shocked when she came to Guam to find out that the majority of doctors on this island don't have medical malpractice insurance. So it was, it was a good one. Um, I'm looking forward to the other one, the other testimonies, and definitely to thoroughly read the many testimonies that came in, uh, via email. And, um, I just hope that these individuals would, would come in.
Sorry.
So, yeah, it was a long night, but we're here. Few Republicans through and through.
Senator, uh, Brown, uh, before we get into our, our questions, just what was your takeaway from the testimony last night?
Well, I certainly appreciated everyone that testified, uh, at last night's hearing from, you know, the members of the public, uh, that, that came to relay their issues and their concerns and what they experienced with their family. Certainly the father talking about his son and as, as Senator Teletlo mentioned, um, you know, for, for them to come forth and, and talk about the challenges and the hurt that they've gone through. I, I'm sure it's not easy to do that, least of all, you know, to do it publicly, but it's very important, uh, you know, information for us to hear and, and for our community to hear because there are other cases we hear out in the community, uh, where our people have gone through this and have, have suffered through it, you know, and we're... I think it's important, you know, Chris, to make it very clear, we're looking at, at negligence. We have a lot of good doctors on Guam. I mean, when I go see my doctor, I almost feel like, you know, I'm ten years old when they tell you, you know, "You need to do this and not do this with your health, and you need to exercise more, and you need to eat less."
I think we've got the same doctor.
You feel like you're tense sitting there, and you're like, "Yes, yes, like, yes, I understand, I, I, I'll do better." So we have many good doctors in our community, and it was very, very, um, you know, I'm glad they came out and spoke last night, especially doctors we otherwise would not, you know, have, unless you were, you know, they were your doctor, you, you probably would not have heard from them. Uh, 'cause certainly you have some that are very vocal and, and, you know, they're out there all the time, but certainly to hear, uh, the variety of doctors, including the younger doctors that, uh, have gone off and were born and raised on Guam, Guam's home, went off and got their education and, and came back and are reinvesting themselves in the community. Uh, and, and we're very supportive of all those good doctors. I think the main issue is here is how do we address negligent doctors? Any doctor that, that has, you know, gone outside of, of what the standard of care should be and, and, and didn't provide that care to a patient that ended up suffering or in some cases may have passed away as a result of it. And that's a concern, and I'm sure our good doctors would wanna know as well. I mean, even among themselves, I'm sure they may know, um, you know, who may have done this. But the system's set up right now where there's not really an avenue, and I, we can't just say it's, it's a poor indigent. I mean, more, most people, you know, don't have the resources financially or otherwise to even pursue this. And, and it's important that the issues get addressed, that if, if there is a negligent practitioner out there, that, that not only are they identified, but that there's a process, uh, to deal with that so that they're not out there harming someone else. Because if this was, you know, ourselves, if it's your family member, your child, your mother, your father, I mean, we don't have the luxury of making too many mistakes with regards to, um, you know, our healthcare. And, and we need to have an avenue to, to address that. And I'm certainly committed, I mean, last night, yes, it was a long hearing, uh, and I know there were others that were there that were not able to testify, uh, because of the time. But I'm certainly committed, as I know my colleagues that are on this morning are, to, to hearing all sides of the story. And I certainly encourage other members of our community, if they've been affected, please come out and, and let us know, uh, what you've experienced, and certainly encourage more people in the medical profession to come out and also, uh, lend their voice to this issue because we're all challenged in trying to find what is a good solution to allow our doctors to practice safely and, and do the good work that, that they invested so many years of their life and are committed to. Uh, but yet at the same time, we have to have a mechanism in place to address negligent practices that are happening in our community because, you know, it might be viewed, "Oh, well, that's a small percentage," and that, you know, "That's just the course of life." But I'll tell you, if that small percentage is you or your loved one, uh, you're not gonna look at it that way. You're gonna look at it in a very serious manner of, of wanting to have some, some, uh, and in some cases you can't repair it, but what options are there to address justice in that process? Which is really what we're looking at. We're not, we're not out here to just go get anybody, and that's not the intent. But obviously, this dialogue and, and certainly the, what has come as a result of it, the sentiment that's coming out there, both from the medical side and, and our public, is, is a good thing. It's, it's a discussion that needs to happen because it's a real legitimate concern that needs to be addressed. And we know there are concerns from all sides, but, you know, where can we come to common ground, uh, to address that? And I certainly believe we need the input of the medical community to do that and everyone else in our community to come to the table so that we can work towards a solution and, and move forward, eh, you know, of the better practice with regards to healthcare, healthcare here on our island.
Senator Duennas?
Yeah, um, I don't know, I'm having a little trouble with my connection today, but can you hear me?
Yeah, you're good.
Yeah, you're perfect, Senator.
We can hear you, Senator.
Okay, great, uh, yeah, so I, I'm having a little trouble, but, uh, as long as you can hear me, that's great. You know, um, I was reminded last night of a, a famous, uh, quote by Winston Churchill. You know, "It takes courage, uh, to stand up and speak, and, uh, it also takes courage, uh, to sit down and listen." And, uh, I've done a lot of listening, and I'm gonna continue to do a lot of listening. I, I appreciate, uh, my colleague, Senator, uh, Taidegui and Senator Brown for the comments that they've made so far. So, in listening, the three things that I took away from last night's hearing is, the doctors understand, uh, the issue of the cost, the nature of the cost and cost prohibitive nature of the arbitration process. Um, you know, they, they seem to, to really hone in on saying to us, you know, "Let's find an affordable avenue and an avenue to address this issue." Um, the other issue that I heard last night, really, that I think kind of is under the surface that, uh, they're trying to express is that we have a very ill population, and the specialties and subspecialties that aren't here on Guam, really, um, that they are filling that gap, and they're extremely concerned in terms of, uh, what this legislation, uh, might do with regard to that issue. Um, and so we need to address that particularly when it comes to, uh, pediatrics. It seems like that is the really, uh, overriding issue that, that specialty and subspecialty is underserved, and they're dealing with a lot of issues, uh, with, with pediatric care and, and the like. And so I think that that's something that's, you know, we have to sit down and deal with. I think, you know, uh, as, as Senator Brown, Senator Taidegui has said, that, you know, this has to happen because you can tell that there's been a lot of things bubbling under the surface with regard to those, um, who feel as though there's been negligence. And also, um, with regard to the doctors in terms of saying they wanna practice on Guam, um, but they need an environment, uh, to where we can, uh, so-called weed out bad apples, um, you know, deal with bad doctors or, or, or medical practitioners who are not practicing to the standard, the proper standards. Um, one of the things I took away from last night too is that they would like us to strengthen, um, the, the board, the situation with the medical board and licensure, and that, and that that is something, uh, that we need to look at as well. So I think, at least, what, once again, what I took away from last night was, everybody's willing to work on this issue. This is not gonna be one of those bills. I think that, uh, you know, is, is, can be moved quickly. We need to deliberate properly. And then also, last night, we received a letter from the judiciary saying that they have, um, uh, difficulties with the thought process and how they would be able to deal with the magistrate judge, um, issue contained in this bill, that they currently are inundated and overloaded with the current magistrate judges that they have, and that they would request at least a year to be able to establish that process. So we have a lot of concerns on the table, but I think everybody's committed to the process.
Sabrina?
What?
Oh, I don't know what to do.
I'm just looking at the letter.
Oh, uh, so we did get a copy of Dr. Nativedat's, uh, testimony. What, what news flash, a doctor who testified in support of Bill 112. Um, uh, I don't know if you guys were able to see this. I, I guess I can go ahead and read off a little bit of it. Uh, this is from Dr. Lisa Nativedat, uh, in written testimony. Uh, she writes, "I'm Dr. Lisa Linda Nativedat, a licensed clinical social worker, licensed professional counselor, licensed marriage and family therapist, licensed mental health counselor, standing in support of Bill 112, uh, 36. Over the past twenty years, I've been in varying private practice models from working in a group behavioral health practice to working completely independently, to working in the behavioral health unit of a larger medical clinic, and most recently working in telemedicine, providing therapy online in adaptation to COVID-19 conditions. In addition, my earlier career path as a social worker entailed working with Sanctuary Incorporated, and I continue to work very closely today with varying nonprofit entities that aim to serve our community needs. I stand in support of Bill 112 primarily because of its intent to make accessible the opportunity and pathway of holding medical practitioners accountable for their professional work. The current framework requiring mandatory arbitration, arbitration of the ballpark figure of forty-five thousand to bring forth allegations renders it a structural mechanism of inequality for members of our community. On most quarters, a three-month period of every year, roughly thirty percent of our island population lives below the federal income poverty level to qualify, qualify them for SNAP. Given this reality, what access does our community have to remedy an experience of medical malpractice if the cost of the current framework requiring mandatory arbitration hovers around forty-five thousand dollars?" And then we did see that kind of, uh, theme with a few of the doctors' testimony where they did talk about the prohibitive cost of arbitration.
Yeah. Actually, it was mentioned early too by, uh, Senator Duennas, you know, about, uh, trying to, um, work to find a, a resolution, or I think it was Senator Brown that mentioned. You know, they, they recognize there is an issue, that it's very expensive for anybody to seek some kind of, uh, remedy, you know, if they fall victim to medical malpractice. Um, so I, and I, most doctors, well, I think there was about three of them that actually brought that up and mentioned it. I think, um, Cook Heim, um, one of the, uh, doctors, uh, I think it was, um, Joanne, who was it that, uh, spoke first?
It was, uh, Carla Haddock.
Mariana, yeah, Haddock. Carla Haddock was reading the testimony of Mariana Cook, uh, Heim, and, um, I mean, even in her testimony toward the end, she recognized that there needs to be some kind of adjustment. And, you know, it, it's, it's really unfortunate because a lot of the, the statements that were made last night by doctors were, were information that was, they got their information wrong. They were informed incorrectly. I don't know who's telling them that, uh, it's not gonna cost that much, that arbitration is not incorporated into this legislation when it absolutely is. Um, they talk about, I think, a, another person who came to testify was Dr. Ron McNich, who was in support of Bill 112, uh, and the medical malpractice reform. Um, he too recognizes, you know, that to assist with this discussion, uh, he provided information and data, which I thought was very interesting. We were looking at that yesterday, uh, Speaker and I. Um, and he says that with about, uh, he, give me a, if you don't mind, he says, "The evidence this law doesn't function is demonstrated by natural statistics. According to the data products of the National Practitioner Database, the federal data set for the medical doctors, the numbers are clear. Per one hundred thousand persons, the high number of medical malpractice suits in Louisiana with about forty-five to one hundred thousand, that's forty-five malpractice complaints have been filed within one hundred thousand. And the low state is Hawaii with about five people filing medical malpractices to one hundred thousand. If Guam used the lowest number possible from Hawaii, the results are reflective of this concern. Uh, let's assume a straight line, one hundred and fifty thousand person population for Guam since nineteen ninety-one. This would likely mean that Guam would have seven to eight medical malpractice lawsuits per year using the Hawaii number." You know, we always try and use a jurisdiction that's very close to Guam. And, um, you know, when we talked about this, we, we thought, "Well, how many malpractice, uh, claims have been put forward to Guam?" And that number still is very difficult to come up with. Um, we, what was the other thing we talked about that was, sorry? I was up really late last night trying to review all these testimonies, even past the hearing. But, um, if you look at how many people filed medical malpractice suits, uh, like, sev- for, for instance, right now, there's seventeen complaints at the, uh, Board of Allied Health right now. Of that seventeen, uh, many of them have nothing to do with medical malpractice. Uh, many of them are over a year old. So if you look at it, you're looking at around, what, five or six that might have to do with medical malpractice. Um, uh, losing my train of thought, people.
I think there was a, Senator, there was a stat that, uh, Dr. Ron McNich had put out, uh, where he kinda said, "Okay, if Hawaii has this, uh, population, then comparatively, uh, and, and Hawaii has X amount of malpractice claims filed a year, then Guam's population should yield X amount of malpractice complaints, just based on the population and the number of patients and all that stuff." So, I don't know, uh, if you guys can produce a number of how many claims we're seeing, but it, apparently see, that we're not seeing that amount of claims.
Um, what's the name?
Senator Brown?
Well, was that for Senator Brown?
Uh, anybody.
Yeah, so... Yeah, I, so I think, if I, if I followed your question, I, I think that, um, the caseload is indicative of, of, obviously, I, I believe, uh, you know, that just the, the current setup. And so I think, once again, in listening closely last night, and even to the Speaker as she closed the hearing, is that, uh, after we hear, I, I think she's, uh, really on point with an additional hearing, uh, she talked about having maybe, um, sub-hearings or roundtables with the specifics of the bill. That's kind of interesting 'cause I was talking to, uh, several doctors outside, and it's like this, you know, this issue is complex, and, and it's an issue where you would probably see a conference, you know, a, a two-day conference where you'd go through and, and, and as we've been trying to say, what the bill does and what the bill doesn't do. And so I think as we work going forward, uh, that kind of information, Chris, where you see, uh, you know, the small ca- amount of cases going forward, you see the frustration from those, uh, like, like Mr. Duennas and others that have come forward who feel as though, you know, there was a, it was, it was really, uh, a, a difficult and catastrophic experience that they had, um, and then trying to, uh, break through the barrier. You know, these are, this is the real, you know, uh, divide on the issue. So, you know, what do we do with this bill to facilitate bringing forward and equalizing, uh, that, that situation? And, and I think that's, that's where we're at. Um, and so, yes, I believe that the low amount of cases being brought forward has to do with the system. Um, how do we solve that? And that's, and that's gonna be what we have to do going, going forward. Uh, but like I said, it, what came out, at least to me last night, was just not the mechanics of this bill because it looks like we should be able to have amendments that could, could find the middle ground. We, we should be able to find an amendment to find a, a way to make it more affordable as far as the access. I, I have a few amendments that I'm working on, but I don't wanna roll them out until I've listened, uh, to, to everyone, uh, on this subject. But I, I don't think it's as difficult as, as we might be making it in terms of the affordability and access. Um, but what, like I said, th- this has brought up a whole new array of issues that I think a lot of people weren't really aware of.
Right, Senator.
In terms of how difficult.
Senator, I gotta, uh, sorry to cut you off, but I gotta, uh, go to the top of the hour. We're gonna jump on KUAM TV if you guys could hang on just for a slight moment. Uh, we'll go over to KUAM TV, uh, and continue this conversation. Good morning, it's 8:01. Good morning, Guam! Morning, Sabrina.
Good morning.
Morning, Jason.
Good morning, intense show so far.
Yeah, good morning, KUAM TV, and welcome to the link. It's Thursday, July 8th, 8:02. Coming up on the show, as always, it's a, this show is so big today, I had to carry it sideways just to get through the door. Okay, we're getting, uh, Superintendent of Education John Fernandez, Attorney General Levin Camacho. Uh, other than this Bill 112 public hearing, there was a huge release of surveillance video from the Attorney General's office relative to the, um, shooting, the death of a Tumuning resident that was, um...
Involving an off-duty officer.
Thank you, yeah, and so, uh, Attorney General Levin Camacho coming on about that and a whole bunch of other, uh, issues. It's funny 'cause, uh, Carlina Chaffres over the AG's office, every time the AG comes on, she says, "Hey, send me a list of topics," and so the list of topics was like about that long. So, uh, AG Camacho coming on at, uh, nine. We're also getting Tumuning Mayor, uh, Luis Rivera to kind of unpack, um, you know, there's a, uh, there's a panel that was formed, uh, Bree, relative to this, uh, shooting incident, right? Um, but we haven't been able to really solidify...
That's what we're hearing.
Yeah, that's what we're hearing.
Some sort of a task force or something. But it's not necessarily like a government task force, but I think it's more so with, uh, the...
Stakeholders.
Right.
Of, uh, the FSM community and, and others. But we haven't really been able to, uh, kinda nail down what the goal of this, uh, panel is, but I, I do know that they are, uh, going to be, uh, kinda looking at the police responses, um, too.
Not just to, to that incident.
Not just to that one, yeah. Uh, um, 8:03, so we'll do that with the AG, uh, coming up, and we'll talk about this video, which, uh, was very revealing and provided a lot of detail, uh, to what had happened. And, you know, there's still a lot of questions about it too. It's 8:03, we're gonna continue the conversation. We also got news coming up, uh, with, uh, Sabrina Salsametanani, of course, uh, but right now Senator Joanne Brown, Senator Teletidegui, Senator Chris, uh, Duennas. I'm here, I wanted to play this testimony, if we could, from, uh, veterinarian Dr. Joel Joseph, um, who testified yesterday in the public hearing for Bill 112.
You're not gonna hear that from anybody here today. Not gonna hear that from anybody here today. But it is a law that can be modified and modified intelligently to meet needs that were not originally foreseen. I want you to think about the results of opening the floodgates of litigation without the checks and balances of the MMMAA. Doctors and staff will spend their time with legal counsels and in court instead of caring for patients. Fees will need to go up in order to cover legal bills and the missed time in exam rooms. The doctor fees goes up, the insurance rates go up. The only ones that will lose out are the poor, the indigent, which are the ones you are professing to do this for. The only true result will be that medical care will only be affordable by the rich who can go off-island. Look around you, senators, in that big crowd out there. Have you seen the medical community come together ever like this? I mean, for anything. Doctors do not agree on anything. Okay? Doctors can't even agree that your mucous membranes are pink. Okay? And I'm gonna call you two senators out, Senator Tulahe and Taidegui. You have united almost the entirety of Guam's medical professional community. I think that is an amazing feat, and I congratulate you for it. You have now created the basis of an organization that can go forward and target each and every senator that votes for this law at the next election. And we will spend all that money that you accuse us of accumulating on defeating your reelection bids. You have gotten us organized, and we thank you. Doctor after doctor has or will be telling you that they will reduce services and consider leaving the island. These are not threats. This is not bullying. This is the truth of what will happen if you pass Bill 112. There are doctors on rec...
And we'll go to Senator Brown for, uh, this one. So Senator Brown, let's just talk about, I mean, huge elephant in the room. It, it is actually the room. Um, doctors saying that they're gonna leave island if this bill passes, that's, uh, you know, specialists aren't gonna come here, that, uh, the fragile healthcare system is gonna be shattered into a million pieces if Bill 112, uh, passes. I mean, these are the very professionals that we trust with our health, right? Coming out and saying that this is what it is, and it wasn't just Dr. Joel Joseph. It was a non-stop stream of testimony last night to that effect. So how do you, uh, respond to...
Well, you know, I mean, that's, that's, Chris, where we need to get back to common ground because, I mean, it, it, I think we need to, to look at a balanced perspective on this issue, and certainly, you know, the, the comment, yes, you know, "We, we're gonna leave or you're not gonna have these specialists." And certainly, we hear that, we hear their concerns. I mean, they're, they're the ones that are actually practicing. But, but to project the image that in other jurisdictions there aren't requirements in place to address these very concerns, uh, you know, it's not as if they leave Guam, they're gonna, if they go back to the mainland, that they're going to, uh, you know, a state where there's no requirements to address this issue, where many will, you know, actually have to have malpractice insurance. So we're not, you know, I, I understand the concern, and, and, you know, we need to be focused also on the quality of care that our people are getting. And that's why we're saying, where, where, what's the alternative then? Uh, we don't wanna lose, uh, the, how good healthcare professionals that we have, but most definitely, we simply can't allow a blank check, so to speak, for, uh, doctors that, that are negligent. And that's really what we're focused on, is negligent practices on the island that harm our people. Uh, what are we telling them? Well, you know, "We'll give you healthcare, and if some of you, by the way, you know, these things happen, well, too bad." It's just the way it is. Uh, you, we have to have a mechanism in place to address that. There has to be a recourse for people that are harmed. And granted, unfortunately, that's not the, the majority. I'm, I'm hoping that this is a very small minority of cases that, that we should deal with. I hope the statistics will be very low. Because I understand where the doctors are coming from too. I mean, they've invested so much of their life in, in being able to get credential to do the work that they do, and, and many of them last night, especially our doctors, young doctors... And many of them last night, especially our doctors, young doctors that grew up on Guam, you know, expressed the moments in their life when they made the decision because of an impact of love or care for a family member that wasn't able to get the care that they needed at the time, that made them want to go to medical school and say, hey, well, I'm gonna be here for other members of my community that need this service. And I think that's very important. I don't, I don't, I don't discount any of that. I believe in what they're saying and what they're telling our community. But at the other end, to say, oh, there's no mechanism we're gonna have in place to address if there's negligent care on this island where someone has been harmed, maybe harmed to the point that they end up passing away as a result of it, that there's no recourse. And that literally leaves all our people at the mercy of bad healthcare. And I don't think that's what any of us, including the medical professionals that are in our community, want to see. So that's why I think it's important, this is a very big issue. It's not something, obviously, that's gonna be addressed and resolved overnight. Working to consensus is a bigger challenge now because you're gonna have disagreements about how to go about that. I mean, we had one doctor say, well, I don't want this medical board that's made up of all these different other medical professions that's not specializing in my medical profession to evaluate me. So it's like, what can we come to the table and discuss? That's where we also need their input in their, as medical professionals, to say, how do we deal with negligent practices? Because I don't think anybody wants to see that continue. And then because nothing happens, or maybe very little happens as a result of a physician that has been negligent, are they going on and doing this harm to other innocent patients out there that are coming to them for good healthcare? Because most cases, I mean, it's nice to, you know, you're younger, you go see your doctor because it's your annual physical, and they pat you on the back and say, you're doing well. Well, that's not always the case. And for those of us that need that healthcare, we want to make sure it's reliable. I'm not looking to go sue my doctor. That's not further thing from my mind. I'm hoping I'm complying with the things they tell me I need to do so that I can have and continue to have good, you know, good health overall. So that's what we need to be focused on. But the threats, there's nothing to be gained by that. And you look at Dr. Joseph's comments, I mean, those are direct threats. And, you know, I fear more having good healthcare and a quality of life than I fear elections. I mean, we all, of course, if you run for office, want to get elected, but those type of threats that no more than us, you know, making direct, that doesn't get us anywhere. That doesn't move the dialogue forward. You know, the people will decide who they want to be their leaders, and that's not even in our hands to decide. That's for them to decide. But we're not gonna get anywhere simply having the attacks. And certainly, I have to tell you, I give Senator Telo credit. It's, you know, to go through what she's been through in her healthcare, and then to have to discuss it publicly, and then to have that healthcare taken away because she's sponsored this bill, and she's a senator, she's someone who's visible in our community and who's able to speak up. What about those, Chris, that cannot? That don't have that platform? And that have, are put in this circumstance where they or a loved one can't get the healthcare they need? That's what we need to be focused on. It's not right what is happening in that dialogue or threats that are being made, that if, you know, if you put, not just in general about, you know, elections, but to not even get the healthcare you need to sustain your life. And be, and not even, you know, this issue wasn't even swept under the rug. It wasn't even subtle. It's a direct, well, I'm no longer gonna provide you care, and in 30 days, you have to get another doctor or go off-island. That concerns me. The fact that that, something like that can happen to someone, you know, fellow colleague of mine, Republican or Democrat, it doesn't matter, but to put someone for proposing these issues to bring forth concerns in our community, directly threatened like that. That's not right. That's not okay. And that's, you know, we talk about what's not Guam, that's not Guam. And this is on a proposed bill that hasn't even been debated on the floor, that hasn't, you know, even been signed into law or become law. And that's the response. That's the kind of negativity that's not gonna move us forward. These attacks and threats is not gonna move us forward. What we need to be concerned about are the members of our community that have been harmed that have no recourse. And yes, in that case, we do need to think about the individual. We do need to think, there has to be a recourse to address that concern regardless of their financial standing, because they're a member of our community, and we need to be concerned about the members of our community that are harmed because someone may have a negligent practice. And of course, at the other end, we don't, and I hear their voices, what the doctors were saying. They don't want to be opened up to just, you know, they turn left, right, up or down, and then they're gonna get, you know, a suit filed against them. And their whole credentials and their career. You know, I understand, that's what's a jeopardy. That's what's a jeopardy for them. And we don't want to open the door either to frivolous lawsuits because someone just wants to go out there and file a case because they want to make money and destroy anything and everything in their way. That's not what we want to do. But I think with all the capabilities we have in this community, we have to come to some consensus about what can work so that medical professionals, good caring medical professionals in our community can do what they need to do. And yet our people have some sense of comfort that if I'm harmed, I've got, there's something I can do about it, or my loved one and my family is harmed, I have some recourse. Because right now, it doesn't seem like they do. It doesn't seem like they do when they're harmed. And some of this, what has been impacted of members of our community is lifelong. If they survive it, they live with it every day. They live with it every day. And if there's a negligent physician practicing out there, then by all means, we don't want them practicing on Guam. Well, roll out the red carpet for them to leave Guam. We don't want them, but we don't want them harming someone anywhere else. So I think those are really the main issues that we need to be focused on once we get past all these attacks. And some individuals are very, you know, vocal and visible about doing that. It's very demeaning in their engagement because, you know, they want that to be the discussion. And I don't think it's gonna get us anywhere. I think we need to roll up our sleeves. And as I mentioned, I'm committed. You know, however many meetings the speaker wants to call on this issue, I'll be there. And I know my other colleagues that are on this morning will be there to hear the input of our community so that hopefully we can come up with an even better decision that can address these concerns. And I very much believe our medical practitioners out there are gonna be very helpful in that process. And like I mentioned, please, come out, have your voices be heard. We need to, we need to address this because the Senator Chris had mentioned, there's an undercurrent bubbling up in our community with regards to this issue. So I don't think it's something we can just, oh, you know, put the bill on file and let's just move on. I don't think so. I think, I think because of all the issues that have been raised, it's something that we need to, we need to sit down and roll up our sleeves and address.
Senator Tydegui, I did want to hear your side and talk about this letter that Senator Brown was referring to in this, I guess, threat.
Well, it's actually not a threat, it's a reality for me right now that I have to deal with and find a physician to monitor me. I've had the same physician for the last three years monitoring my, what we call markers when you have cancer. You're given like five years that you need to monitor if the cancer comes back. And it's a simple blood test, you know? I have a couple other friends, when you, when you go through a path like this, a journey like this, you make friends with other people who you can talk to and relate to because they have the same thing. And I was curious because when I got my Dear John letter, that I called my friends and asked them, did they get one as well? Because we have the same kind of cancer. And none of them got it. Actually, one of them told me that the doctor was sitting in the office convincing him to go against Bill 112. It was like, this is a wrong person to ask to with him because he's had issues in the past with doctors being negligent with him. So I was just really taken back, you know? It was not something I, I did not anticipate. I knew that if I was gonna go down this road and fought this in 2019, I did my study and my homework on this before I finally decided to go through it and fight this cause, this injustice that's been going on. I didn't become a senator to turn a blind eye. And if it means jeopardizing where I am, my healthcare, I think it's worth the fight. If I can help other people, you know, to get justice and who've been wrong, then I'm stepping up to the plate for it. I did want, if you can allow me, you know, because now it's gonna get a little bit emotional because I'm not just thinking of myself, I'm thinking of my other friends who are also cancer survivors, who are, still have to watch their back, you know? It gets stressful every three months when we have to do that blood test, you know, is it back? And it, for doctors not to simply just provide a blood test so that they can read it and look at it, what's the medical malpractice in that? Because if it does come back, we will have to seek specialist care for that. And most likely, in my type of cancer, I'd have to go off-island, and which I'll do what I have to do, you know? But anyways, I wanted to go back, if you didn't mind, when I was talking about the numbers and what Dr. McNich brought up. If you count, how many procedures are done on Guam? How many procedures? You know, I mean, in one clinic, I think they said they do about 3,500 procedures in one year. And if the medical, any complaints are coming in from 3,500 to about, what, five coming in yearly? I mean, Hawaii shows the data of only five from 100,000. And for the doctors to be so concerned about these frivolous lawsuits, first of all, I don't know if they're afraid of frivolous lawsuits or just lawsuits that actually have merit, you know? Which really, which is it? Because this bill addresses frivolous lawsuits through a magistrate judge in a timely fashion. You know, Guam, Guam is a cultural, historical place where we do not like to air out our dirty laundry. I mean, there's, I think one of the people testifying saying we're mamalo, or don't shame, you know, don't shame us, or don't bring it up, you know, hide behind the sheet, you know, don't get involved. You know, we've been notorious as a culture from not really ruffling the feathers or kicking up the dust in our community. We just suck it up and turn away. So I don't understand why these doctors think that everyone on Guam is gonna file a lawsuit against them, like the sky is falling, you know? That's not the case. So I really hope that the doctors and those who are opposed against the bill first really understand what we're trying to do in this legislation. And that is to bring a balance. And I think this legislation does it. For the doctors to claim that, oh, well, pay for the arbitration. Who's gonna pay for that? The taxpayers? My goodness. You know, right now, this year, money might be flooding into Guam, but what happens next? Next year, and the following year? We're not gonna get all this federal funding coming in here. You know, our roads are really bad right now. We're trying to build actually a public hospital. There's so many things that are needed. And for the doctors to say, oh, just use your money and pay for their arbitration. That's not the case. And it's true what Dr. Yashiro mentioned too, with regards to, it's still gonna cost with the magistrate judge screening panel. It will, of course. There's a filing fee, you have to go to the courts.
But it's not gonna cost $45,000, is it, upfront?
Not at all. Not at all. But it's a simple filing fee. If you want to go in with an attorney, then you would have to pay for that attorney. But you don't have to go in with an attorney. You can file this. You can provide the documents that you have. If you want to have a specialist in the field to testify that this doctor did not meet the standard of care, then you need to find a specialist to do so. But like you said, it's not gonna cost $45,000. For Dr. Yashiro to say something like that, it's, you know, it's kind of disingenuous because he's forgetting to attach the price tag to going to a magistrate judge or going through arbitration. And I can't tell you enough times that these doctors keep saying that arbitration is the best route. Well, it's still in, it still allows for you to go through arbitration by both parties agreeing. So it just, I think more information, another public hearing to bring this out. I like to sit down, talk with these, with doctors, but I haven't had one single call from a doctor wanting to come and talk to me, other than when this first came out with Dr., was Dr. Ho Alfred, Dr. Alfred, and Dr. Bird. Since then, no other doctor has been asked, has asked to see me or set up an appointment to see us. So I don't know why they're too...
What I think is interesting, Senators, is when we talk about the number of procedures that are being done, and the number of, you know, claims, or even incidences of possible, you know, malpractice or complaints being filed, we don't have an accurate snapshot of that because the process for arbitration is, I mean, it's so costly, right? So when I hear that we have these doctors who are trained for one thing, but then performing procedures outside their specialty, what I wonder is, if you're not qualified to do a procedure, it seems like it's almost riskier for patients to get these procedures. And I'm just wondering, what about the patient's, you know, the chance of risk of injury from me getting a procedure from somebody who's not qualified to do it because they're just trying to help out? So what I want to know is, are there incidences of negligence or, you know, possible malpractice or even accidental, things that we just can't get an accurate read on because this process of filing complaints is so prohibitive? So I don't know. When I hear these doctors talking about how they're trying to help, because we're all, you know, I mean, obviously, there's so many shortcomings in our healthcare system because of our isolation and our population and all that. When I hear that if you're trained to do one thing, but I really want to help, so I'm gonna go and operate on this person, and I'm gonna go do this and that, I mean, if you're not qualified to do it, are you really gonna be doing the best job that someone who is? And then if they're just trying to help, do we have to continue to kind of give this pass to people at the expense of the patients who are being operated on or, you know, enduring these? That's, to me, that's when I hear doctors talking about how they're being forced to operate outside of their specialty. I mean, I commend them because we all know we're short specialists and stuff, but I also gotta wonder, are there risks involved with them doing that? And they do say it. We had, we played a clip, and the doctor said, basically, the arbitration shields her from malpractice claims.
Right, that was Dr. Leon Guerrero. And one of the questions I asked Dr. Leon Guerrero is, at what point do you draw the line to determine if a patient needs to be seen by a specialist? There were so many other questions I wanted to ask. For instance, do you have an obligation to notify the patient that he should see a specialist? And do you ever recommend those who can't afford to go off-island to seek assistance at public health for travel expenses? Do you believe it is unfair for people who are poor, who are not able to seek justice? If they're victim, I mean, there were so many other questions we wanted to ask because due to time, due to time, we weren't able to really ask some of those really important questions when it comes to specialized care. Do you actually have a patient to sign the waiver if the patient refuses to go off-island and says, well, you know what, I'm gonna take my chance, doc. I just want you to take care of me because I don't want to leave my family, I don't want to go off-island. And then when it comes to that point, does the doctor have the ability to have them sign a waiver, you know, to that effect? And if you look at medical malpractice, every attorney, every attorney in favor of a doctor will tell them, document, 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 every single word that was said. You need to be accountable for documenting. You need patients to sign off that they do not want to go off-island, that they want it to be cared of. And it was Dr. Leon Guerrero that I asked her about a certain procedure when it came to specialized care. And if I'm not mistaken, I believe she said something like, well, you know, I can do the procedure, I've only done it like 17 times, but, you know, they can go off-island, someone who's done it, you know, 45 times or something like that. Don't quote me directly on that. I haven't heard, I haven't replayed it back, but I was thinking, well, if you are trained it, even though you've trained into it and you've only done it 17 times, don't you need the experience going like the doctor who's done it 45 times or something? So it did, I think there are avenues to assist those individuals who refuse to go off-island, and doctors have the ability to cover themselves in the event that they want to continue to help this individual. But really, do doctors actually advise the patients to go off-island and seek specialized care?
Okay. I wish we had, I wish we had five and a half hours. I really do. Because you're right, there are just so many questions that we have. But there's another public hearing on Monday, and then Speaker Telahe has said that she wants to add another public hearing this month. And then this thing hasn't even hit the floor for debate yet. So, I mean, the time for questions and the time for answers... questions and the time for answers, the clock's still running. So I want to thank you guys.
And hopefully, like you mentioned, I think Senator Tydegui, there would be like some sort of a roundtable.
Yeah, I think that would be very helpful.
Senator Duennius, thank you. Senator Brown, thank you as always.
Thank you too. Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. We'll see you guys.
Thank you, Chris and Bree. Have a great day.
Right on. There you go. Yeah, we'll talk about this all day, like, I would love to talk about it all day. It's so interesting. To me, it's such a complex issue, there are just so many points being touched on. You know, there's another, I don't know...
And I think also, not, you know, not just senators, but also bringing in some of these doctors too.
Yeah, yeah. But I think most importantly, I want to hear from the public. You know what I mean? When you had the doctors come out and testify again, and that's their right, right? They didn't even get to everyone last night. So what do members of the public think about this, right? Because, I mean, obviously, doctors feel like this bill attacks them and it's gonna affect their bottom line, so they're gonna, of course, they're gonna come out and offer their two cents. And there was, there was some testimony yesterday that was very collaboratively spirited, right?